Okay, I'd like to call the meeting, it's number six to order, start with the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All in favor?
Yes, sir.
Approval the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second. All in favor? Minutes of the last meeting.
I move to reprove the minutes for the November twenty-ninth meeting.
Second.
All in favor? Time to administer the weekly update.
Okay, first is the November sheriff log. First, on November first, Deputy Sanborn responded to a home in Shapley for CPR. Unfortunately, a sixty-one-year-old female was found deceased, nothing suspicious, so our thoughts to that family. On November second, Deputy Jones responded to a home on Hopper Road in Acton to check on the well-being of a forty-year-old male after he reported having concerns about saying goodbye to them. When the deputy arrived, he found the subject in the vehicle with a hose taped to the exhaust pipe and the passenger windows up. Eventually, the subject did exit the vehicle but ran behind a shed. He was found holding a knife and resisted. They eventually were able to take him into protective custody. On November third, deputies responded to a home on Fox's Ridge Road for the report of a suicidal female who was damaging property. They also were able to take her, thirty-nine-year-old female, into protective custody by the end of it. November fourth, Deputy Sienard responded to a home on Ridge Road in Shapley for suspicious activity. Looks like some camera footage showed some vehicles driving past the residence and slowing and getting out and getting back in. By the time they got there, they were unable to find the vehicle. November fourth, deputy was flagged down by a citizen who notified him of a structure fire on Seventh Street in Acton. House was fully involved, two occupants and one dog escaped the house without injuries. One dog was unaccounted for. The house, which is an Airbnb, was a total loss. November fifth, Deputy Sienard reported to a rollover crash on Gore Road in Shapley. Prior to the deputy's arrival, the operator fled the scene, leaving his company vehicle and tools behind. Sorry. A call was placed for the wrecker and the vehicle was removed. November eighth, Deputy Sanborn is investigating the theft of a camper trailer on Fox's Ridge Road. The camper was last seen a month ago, it's a nineteen ninety-two Skyline Travel trailer. And November thirtieth, two deputies responded to a home on Riverview Drive in Acton for a missing person. Caller reported that her seventy-four-year-old husband had dementia and went missing. He'd been gone for a couple of hours. The husband eventually was found two hundred yards behind the house under a deep embankment near the river. Looked like he had fell, he was hypothermic, but he was transported and looks like he's gonna be okay. Yesterday, myself and the two staff members in my office attended a motor vehicle training in Sanford. What they call, motor vehicles calls a fall workshop, just gonna give you a couple of highlights from that. First is that effective January first, twenty twenty-four, Maine is going back to the twenty-five-year-old title law. So currently Maine titles ninety-five and newer, and as the calendar changes, it's always ninety-five and newer, ninety-five and newer. They're going back to twenty-five years permanently, so effective January first, you'll be titling nineteen ninety-eight and newer. And then in twenty twenty-five, it'll change to ninety ninety-nine and so forth. So it was like that probably ten years ago and they have changed back and forth. Next is that they removed a limit on veteran plates. Currently, you're only allowed to have two vehicles registered in your name with veteran plates, so now you can have as many as you want, as long as you're a titled owner. They did a major overhaul and extension on the excise exemption, which was a big topic of conversation. Doesn't affect Acton because the Acton selectmen over the years have allowed us to keep a policy that makes any veteran getting paid at a hundred percent exempt from excise regardless of what type of plate they had, so it's a benefit that Acton's had. That was never the case with the state, you had to either be a Purple Heart recipient or a hundred percent disabled. So they have now basically are following Acton's policy, so it's kinda nice. You'll see next week an updated policy because we need to remove the two veteran plates out of our policy because we can't trump state law. And the other thing that was notable from this class, which I struggle to figure out why, they are doing a statewide plate change. If you are a veteran, you might know back in two thousand and eighteen, they changed all the veteran plates. It wasn't optional, they made a new plate, every time you came in to renew, we were forced to give you the new veteran plate. They are now going to be doing that with passenger plates, the chickadee plate. About twenty years ago, the state plate was the lobster, if you remember, and they changed it to the chickadee. So they're gonna be starting at the end of twenty twenty-four, everybody's getting a new license plate. They haven't said what it is, but when you come in to renew, you will get their new plate. It's just not an option, you have to take it. Tree lighting is coming up on, I think, December ninth, if that sounds correct, I think that's, is it the Saturday? Reminder that we have a workshop with the school committee on December thirteenth from four to five, and that is just a workshop between the select board and the school committee. Did send out the email saying to be no public input, just so you can work out the town meeting date. And the other thing noting more from the clerk's side is that also effective January first of twenty twenty-four, Maine is transitioning from a closed primary system to a semi-open primary for the election. So we have a major primary coming up in March. They have released the names for the Republican and Democratic candidates. In the past, if you were unenrolled, you had to enroll in one of those two parties to participate in the primary and you had to stay in it for ninety days. This election is going to be the first one that you can, as an unenrolled voter, at the check-in table, declare one or the other without filling out a new voter card and staying in it. Sounds like we've been bringing on a little extra election staff, but.
So if I'm an independent, which I'm not, but.
There is no independent party in the state of Maine unless you're a Green Independent.
Okay, so if I'm a Republican and I walk up, I can change my status.
No.
You have to be unenrolled.
If you're, if you're unenrolled.
You can't be affiliated with the party.
And at next week's meeting, we'll start advertising the timelines because every year we go through this. I mean, you have, and I don't know the date, but if you are a Democrat and you wanna be a Republican for the March primary, you have to switch, I believe it's sixty days before the election, it's either sixty or ninety, so we'll be advertising that over and over because when you come up, you're going, if you're already enrolled in a party, you're getting that ballot period. If I can go in there and pull the voter card and show that you checked that box, unless it's error.
So if you're, is it undeclared?
If you're undeclared.
Undeclared, and you wanna pull a Republican ballot.
You can just take it.
So you take it, but when you come out, do you have to?
No.
Some states do that.
That right, you're unenrolled, yep.
Yep.
You don't even have to enroll in the party, you can just participate.
That's what makes it semi-open.
That's the semi-open, yeah.
Had to do either or.
All right, that's it for me.
Department head, committee chair updates? Let's see, one committee, one department head, nobody? Okay, liaison updates, Tom.
Let's see, municipal management, spent some time looking at the brokerage reports for for investment accounts. Things are moving as expected. Through the end of November, we've realized around eighty-six thousand dollars in investment income from our TD Bank accounts and additional amounts from our normal deposits on file with Partners Bank. So we're on track to do something in excess of two hundred thousand, which is pretty much what we budgeted. So things are going well there. Warrant and finance, had a meeting last Monday night, Monday night. They elected a new chair, Leslie Berlin. They spent some time talking about the upcoming budget cycle. They know that we're gonna be talking about that tonight, I told them to make sure they either attend and see Joyce here, thank you. But otherwise, I think we're all sort. Oh, I'm sorry, and Lee as well, excuse me, Lee. I think we're all aligned in terms of trying to move forward and get the municipal budget done quickly.
Yes.
And so we'll be working on putting together a schedule that will incorporate the needs of the warrant and finance committee. APAT, we've been talking with the director there about some potential operational changes and how that all works, and he's gonna be doing some additional work on that. And either at the next meeting or the meeting thereafter, we'll have something to talk about there if things go as planned. And I think that rounds things out.
After, I got a message from the fire chief today, or yesterday, wants to go over the budget based on the email for getting the budget together and gonna get ahold of Robin and do the same thing with the transfer station. Other than that, I don't have anything else.
Dan?
Other than the workshop, really, there's nothing else to report for me this week.
Okay. Road, road committee, I spoke to the chair of the road committee. I'm gonna go up and inspect the Article forty-three on Abbott Road at some point, hopefully this coming weekend, I'm hoping. And the rec committee, I attended a meeting the other night, tree lighting and some other stuff. I guess meet went all right, but I am in touch with the director on a couple of concerns, we're dealing with it. And I guess that's all I got on the liaison, so I guess we'll move down to the old business. Twenty-three, twenty-four salt bids.
So Will notified me today that he still has been, he still hasn't heard back from the lady from the state, so he's asked that we push it off one more week. He's still trying to get comparative.
What has he heard?
He's trying to get comparative prices to go against the cog.
Okay, so.
He said they're not getting back to him.
Well, if you'd like, I can make a phone call.
I mean, I'm happy to make a phone call as well.
You can do it.
But I didn't, I mean, I didn't wanna step on his toes, how much time he wanted to give him.
We just wanna make sure we're on this, last year it was kind of a.
Yeah.
I'll make a phone call.
An RFP was sent out, right?
Not for salt, no, we don't usually send one out because there's only, what, like three, two or three companies? We get prices from each one of them that offer salt.
That's one of those deals where we're kinda stuck in that, that's, you know. But typically, you could call Granite State and they will give you a price over the phone, you know, at least make sure.
All right, I'll talk to Will and we'll get it done.
Why couldn't we do a bid process there? I understand there's a limited number of vendors.
Well, we kinda do, we kinda do because the cog does it for us.
No, I appreciate that, but it's, it's a, what's the value of that?
Usually spending sand in salt? David would know better.
Seventy, eighty thousand dollars.
How much, seventy or eighty thousand?
Seventy, eighty thousand anyways.
I don't, I guess I don't understand, even if there's only two or three eligible or potential bidders, if we had a formal bid with a date for it to be submitted, it seems to me we would avoid this problem. If them not responding and so on, they wanna bid, they gotta bid. And rather than taking pricing over the phone, I don't think we'd do that for anything else.
Well, these guys don't really care if they call the salt or not, that's the problem.
That's why we chase them.
Yeah, they don't really care, I mean, last year we had to pull teeth to get them to come, you know, because we, remember, we kinda prolonged everything so long and at the end of the day, they were like a hundred and some dollars a ton, because like, we don't care.
Right, we don't need, it's like they don't need to sell it to us.
They know we need them more than they need us, and that's the problem we have, so.
I suppose we have the cog to compare it again.
We put the bid process, they just won't send us one.
Okay, all right, well, there's a good reason, thank you.
All right, so I'll call Will tomorrow, we'll make sure we have numbers for next week.
Well, okay, old fire station.
So last week we had the public hearing, and I was hoping that the board might wanna talk about the next step.
I thought there was a pretty clear consensus from the public and the views expressed by the board that we ought to raise the building. And so it seems to me it's a pretty obvious decision at this point. And unless there's further discussion, I'd be happy to make a motion that we.
Guys gonna need discussion or?
No, I think it was very clear cut.
Yeah, more than happy to say we take it down.
Yep, yep.
Do we need an RFP to do this?
Well, I think, I think what we'll do, we'll start off with making a motion and we decide we're gonna get rid of the building.
To demolish it.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so we got that motion on the table?
We do now.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
That's to demolish the building.
Okay, and at this point now, you know, I'll make the motion that we, I don't typically, I don't, but I'm gonna do it because I'll make it easy, make a motion that we go forward to start preparing an RFP on the demolition and removal of the building and prepare it for, you know, prepare the site for asphalt if need be, or something like that. We'll decide that when we do the RFP.
Yeah, as long, yeah, just make sure it includes removal of all remnants of the building.
Yes.
Foundation, everything.
Pretty much, I'm making a motion to start the RFP on the demolition of the building.
Yep.
Any reason not to start an RFP for the redoing of the lot?
No, until we have the engineers come down and figure everything out.
No, but exactly, start that process so that we can get a design of the lot going, so then we can put that out for bid to actually get it done.
Well, let's, let's start with my motion first of getting rid of the RFP for getting rid of the building.
I'll second that.
Do I have a second?
It's been second.
All in favor? Okay, and now we can do, let's do some discussion on what follows that. So we get an RFP out, we figure out exactly what we want the finish to be. Do we want a parking lot or do we wanna leave it gravel so that we can figure out how incorporate the rest of the parking lot and do it?
I'd leave it gravel for now until we can figure out, yeah, terrorist or however, whatever we're gonna do out there.
So should we, we probably should get the engineer involved in this process. We can get him involved anytime, if the builder's not there, they can engineer that with that being gone.
And they can probably set that before the building is gone.
Yes.
So they can do that anytime, so I think given how long this has been around, why don't we move forward with engaging an engineer or a landscape engineer, whatever, I'm not quite sure what technically you need to find there, but to get somebody to come in, take a look at that parking lot and figure out what we're gonna do with it.
Yeah.
Retaining walls, beautification, I would hope that would be part of this as well.
Yep, I was talking to Tom the other day, we were talking a little bit, you know, on the phone there about some stuff we are, you know, when we were in this meeting the other night, we started talking about, you know, expansions and this and that. And, you know, I've got some ideas about, you know, redoing the inside of this place. Making some huge, huge changes, kitchen. I was here during the Thanksgiving meal, okay, and the plumbing wasn't working right and this and that, and, you know, we've been talking. I'd really like to see do a real transformation of the inside. The outside, I wanna, I wanna be historical like it's supposed to be. I'm still not a fan of the vinyl siding, but, but at the end of the day.
Beats what was there.
Well, I understand, but we could've put cedar or something on it, made it right, just spend the extra money, but besides, the point is done. So, but, you know, we start, get this parking lot thing figured out and then start figuring out what we're gonna do in here. The bathrooms, we've heard complaints about the bathrooms, maybe do some adjustments and have, figure out some way to make these compliant or whatever. But let's start with the parking lot, we've got money in the bank, we get asked every year, why isn't it spent? Let's, let's move this along, and I think by getting rid of that building as a step forward and then we can start doing so.
Yep.
So what are we, where are we going with that?
I think we want a, I think we want a motion, I'll propose this, a motion to engage a, an engineering firm or landscape engineering. I'm not quite sure what that is.
I think we call it Texabago, and they'll put it in the right direction.
To come in and make an assessment of the parking lot, would that building torn down and, and provide some, some recommendations on.
Give us maximize our space, make us ADA compliant, and, and figure out how we're gonna make it merge with the parking lot with the church and.
I'd also like to add some concepts around beautification, aesthetics of this whole complex. You know, one oh nine, you know, that's, that's not particularly attractive when you're driving by. I think there were things that could be done to, that could enhance the whole parcel, so let's include that in it as well.
Yep, yep, okay, so.
So I made a motion.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Okay, so we're moving in a direction. New business resignation.
To whom I may concern effective Tuesday, December twentieth, I, Ken White, will be stepping down as a full-time employee of the Acton Fire Department. This letter is to inform you of my two-week notice. I intend to continue my employment with the Acton Fire Department as a per diem employee. Thank you very much, Ken White.
The motions.
The motion, we accept it with regret.
Second. All in favor? Okay.
I believe that's the last firefighter we just hired.
He was the last one we hired?
I think so.
Okay, yeah. Okay, budget timeline.
Okay, lots to talk about with the budget. First, some of the, so just to catch everybody up, I sent the email on Monday essentially saying to the department heads, we wanna start thinking about it, and kinda threw out the date of December twenty-ninth, which I felt was a month away and plenty of time to come up with budgets. Heard a little bit, I've heard some comments, some are absolutely fine with it, others are struggling that it might not be enough time. One of the first, one of the questions that I'm hearing first is the departments wanna know what they're putting in for their salary lines. Are they flatlining salaries, is there an increase at all, and if so, what percentage? Treasurer needs to be able to calculate Social Security and FICA, so they're looking for some sort of number in there. For the fire department, for example, they can't figure per diems without, you know, knowing what that rate is and figuring out how many shifts it are. It's all, we can't just take, they're looking for a specific answer from the board.
The way I think about salary increases is there are two components. One is sort of an economic inflationary increase, and that's something that typically is set for the entire town. It may vary for an organization if they got a particular problem, but typically that's gonna be something that is connected to inflation, the CPI index. The other is what I call programmatic change. That's when someone wants to eliminate a position, change a position, or add a position. And that, I think, is the area where the department heads need to focus. As far as the economic changes, that's math. We can plug in math and we don't want them, at least I don't want them, worrying about the math on that. Let them focus on what programmatic changes they want, and then those are highlighted so it's clear in that budget what the true programmatic changes are, and it's not sort of, you know, blurred by all the economic changes that are going on there. So I would say to them, identify your programmatic changes. What changes do you want in positions that you have? And let the treasurer worry about putting Excel formulas in to bump everybody by three or five percent, whatever we do. That's the way I would do it.
What's he looking for now?
Well, I mean, some of the, I mean, some of the budgets essentially could be done, you know what I mean? If you only have, you know, we'll take my budget for example, I mean, it's extremely easy, short of knowing what I'm calculating my deputy's staff, my deputy clerk's at, you know, it's, it's done, so I just have those last couple of lines because I don't have any of those needs. Right, so I'm happy to pass it in with last year's salary numbers or help out the treasurer and get those lines filled in if I have a simple budget. So, but that all comes with a decision.
Is he looking for from us a percentage?
Yes.
That's what he's looking for.
That's what all department heads are looking for.
See, I, I don't, I, I think, well, we certainly want department heads' input on that. Because they would probably be in the best position, at least initially, to understand what the market is for these jobs. Fire department should know what the market is and they may wanna make a recommendation. And that's something that we as a board should think about and make a decision on.
We did that last year.
Yes, we did, so I'm saying, I, I don't, I don't think they need that to do their budget.
Okay.
And I would say, put, put your budget together, do everything other than compensation, you know, identify what changes you want made. And when it comes to the salary budget, just identify what changes you want in terms of the number of positions or the kind of position you have. That, I don't know about you, I had a hard time deciphering that from the budgets last time. It's buried in with the economics, so I'd like to keep the economic, which is inflation, separate from what's really going on in terms of position changes.
So if they have.
That should be our focus.
If they have no hour adjustments, no staffing changes, have them submit last year's rates.
That's right.
Okay.
Or whatever they need to, however that needs to balance.
I look at it like this, when the department head makes their budget up, their job is to make their budget up on what they need to run their department.
Yes.
Right.
Okay? Only what they need to run their department. If they're, for some reason, will, we'll use, we'll use Robyn's here, so we're gonna use the transfer station today, okay? If, if he feels that his employees need to make a certain amount of money because Shapley is paying the same people a certain amount of money, then it's his job to put that in his budget.
Or give us a recommendation.
It's our job to take it out if we don't feel like it's right.
Right.
So, I mean, there will be tug and pull here and there, but submit what you believe your budget should be. That's the way I believe we should be doing it. The three, four percent, it would be nice if they'll do something like that across the board, it's easy, it makes everything easy, but we didn't do that last year.
Well, we did it with everybody but the fire department.
Same one but the fire department.
We did.
Everybody but the fire department.
And I guess, I mean, that's.
That's why I said we didn't do it because we separated it apart.
Right, they got the five dollars over the years, but for the rest of the municipal.
It was either ketchup or.
They're all gonna come up with different percentages.
Yeah.
And they're gonna have that in their budget sheets that are coming in, and in all likelihood, we're gonna agree on a single number for the town. Maybe some adjustment for a department that can demonstrate it's outside of the market. So now we gotta go in and change all those submitted budgets and put in what we think it ought to be. And I'm saying, just identify what the programmatic changes are that you want in terms of positions and leave the math to the treasurer. And, and once we decide it's four percent, they ought to be able to run that with a simple.
Well, you'll see, we'll use the fire department, for instance, it's pretty easy because what we've been doing for the last couple of years is we're looking at, you know, all the surrounding areas or what, you know, the firefighters are making anyway, and that's how we make our average. So that makes it easy for us if we do a two, or three, or four percent, whether or not it's in that range, or not exceeding the range. But, yeah.
I remember it was an issue when the budgets came in with the salary, and then we ended up changing it. The treasurer had to go in and, you know, and change all those budgets, just leave them the way they are and let her, and, and once we figure out what the percentage is, she can just apply across the board. We don't need department heads to really worry about it.
They should be worried about.
They should be worried about, well, I really need a new position, or this position's gotta change and I gotta add five thousand dollars because we're gonna change the position.
If they change the position, yeah.
If they change, and those are the things I think we ought to focus on.
Well, you know, fuel or whatever, whatever.
But that's, that's, that's management.
That's part of their, yeah, but that's still part of their budget.
That's what we want them to do.
Before I retired, I did the budget for Rollinsford Transfer Station because I was in the budget cycle, you know, before I left. And they wanted everything with the exception of the employees, so exactly what you're saying. I plugged in, or I, I put a note in for what I thought was a fair percentage, but that was just my input on that. Other than that, that number stayed what it was, and I just changed whatever I needed to change within my budget.
So let me just make sure, because I'm gonna send a memo out, so unless they have additional hours or additional staffing needs, they're to leave the salary lines alone and the board will determine what that increases.
We really wanna focus on what I call non-compensation budgets.
That should really make their budget in line here.
That's easy.
That makes everything.
That's very easy.
Don't get them all involved in the math, they don't need to worry about it.
I think there's, some of them are looking at the bottom line too, if they're trying to stay within a ten percent increase, they need to know what that salary is gonna do to the bottom line.
I hope we don't have any ten percent increases this year.
But, you know, they can, if, if they do what I just said, they budget to run their department for what they need only, they probably won't have to worry about that ten percent.
Yeah.
If they can, if they do that, then it makes it easier for us to give a higher percentage on the salary side of it.
So the other concern that, that has come up regarding budgets and putting them together is, is work that needs to be done or purchases that some departments wanna make, if they get bids now, so this is, this all comes up every year. So let's just say, I'm gonna use mine, I need a laminating machine, and it's a five hundred dollar laminating machine. Am I getting one price now, am I getting three prices now, and then none of those prices are good come July when I actually go to buy it? So the department heads are asking how you see it working if they have major purchases.
It's simple, okay? If you're gonna go buy, buy something. I, I bid jobs all the time, I'm always, you know, pricing this, pricing that, okay? My stuff fluctuates also, okay, it's just not the departments here, everybody's stuff fluctuates. I always add a percentage on everything to make sure that I've covered myself, okay? The departments can do the same thing, okay? If they're gonna buy a five thousand dollar, I don't know.
But for budgeting purposes, one plus fifteen percent is enough, we're not going out to bid now, right?
The thing is, if the money doesn't get spent, it just comes back to us anyways, but you don't wanna underbid yourself because you do that.
But we don't want.
So long as that happens, David, if, if somebody wants to put in ten thousand dollars for a piece of equipment, because they've done a couple quotes, or they've called somebody and they said this ten thousand, I, I think that's great, go ahead and put it in the budget that way. But if that item comes in at eight thousand dollars, that doesn't mean they got two thousand to spend on something else. It's gotta come back, and so somehow we're gonna, the treasurer is gonna have to monitor that to make sure that if, if the actual comes in less or more, that we're tracking that.
Well, the thing is, you're talking, some of the. Well, the thing is, you're talking, some of the stuff that you'd be talking is over a certain amount of money, which is a larger amount.
Yeah, that's right.
Some of those things already get voted on in separate warrants anyways.
That's right.
But are you looking for just one price for now for budget purposing, and then you'll go out to bid if and when it's approved?
It's got to go out to bid when it comes time to buy the item.
But what they're, what he's saying, what the department heads are saying is that the number they're providing with the budget becomes a public number, and if you go out to bid six or seven months later, that company's at a disadvantage.
It is an estimate.
I'm just telling you, Tom.
And I, no, I know we run into this problem in that-
This is a municipality problem.
People think that they've, and, and they have, they've made an attempt to get bids. But it's like six or eight months later, the prices can't be held, the vendor doesn't want to hold them. And at, at this point, the budget has been approved to acquire an item. And if we wind up that we're short in that budget for a particular item, at, once the bid is finally done, then we'll have to decide whether or not we have the extra money to go ahead and do that. And if we do, then we authorize it. But I, I, I think the problem is when departments have gone out and got this information, they think they've got bids, and then they think they can go ahead and order.
Right.
And they can't do this.
So we're looking for one estimate?
Just the budget.
Estimate plus 15%.
Estimate on the high side.
Whoever the department head is, it would be to their advantage to get the three anyways.
Yeah.
Because the problem is, if you go to one place because you like that, that place, and they give you an estimate, right? But now we're forcing you, three months later, to go out to bid, and that, that bid is way higher or way low or whatever, okay? It's a disadvantage. You're better off doing a budget, yeah, I guess if I was doing a budget, I would come in and go, okay, I got this price for this, this is what I'm going to base it on. But I would already call two other places and make sure that budget-
Make sure the one you got it right, absolutely right.
I just don't want to hear that we've already bid it and they want to go ahead and like, you know.
Right, you don't go out to bid until after somebody's approved.
Still has to go out to bid.
Okay, alright.
Just because you brought in something to the finance committee who was early doesn't mean-
It's not a bid.
No.
Alright, I'll send another email, I think, so other than that, so now this timeline is very rough, but I just want to talk to you guys about it. So, um, like I said, we, if you look at, if you look at a calendar at the same time, we put in December 29th, which is, gives them a solid month to come up with their budgets. If we get the notices out by the end of the week, which we plan on doing with the work-
Joyce, do you want one of those?
It's really-
Anyone wants one? Because Joyce, Joyce is going to be taking this back to work.
Yeah, it's not, I was hoping to go over and make some changes with the board first.
Oh, okay.
Well, then we'll confiscate that afterwards. We might have to take that back.
It's, yeah. No, I know, I just try to get the board to, I mean, okay. Social services, um, you know, a letter, the treasurer will send out a letter with a timeline, basically just a letter to the social services, that's electronic, should take a matter of minutes to do. So give them until January 12th. Um, I've been talking to code enforcement and, Tom, you're the liaison. So originally, there was talk about five or six articles. Um, I think it's going to be important, and I think that the CEO will appreciate the board's support in maybe attending a meeting or two when this starts having conversations about it. There's, there's concerns about some things that they may want to move forward that have no implications or there's nothing the code officer is going to be able to do about it after the fact. And it creates more work with no, no results. So, and I hate to use this as an example, but it's, it's public. So we have the issue with the, the animal being buried, okay? So the planning board is considering putting, this is third hand, but they're considering putting some of the ordinance that an animal, a deceased animal can't be buried within so many feet of a well, or so many. So let's just say that goes in there. What are the consequences? So now you're taking up all the CEO's time, are you expecting that here the ACO are going to go dig it up, we're going to do tests? What's going to happen? You know, there's, there's conversation about timber harvesting, and the state handles that 100% now, but there's talk about maybe putting some of the ordinance about notifying the CEO if you timber harvest on your property. For what? You know what I mean, what, you know what I mean? Right, so he's concerned that some of the-
The current cost on us.
Well, that, that's what we're saying, so that's what he, the concern is, is that possibly some of these things that we may be looking to move forward, there's nothing he can do about it. Whether they're good ideas or not, this is nothing about the planning board or their thoughts, but there's nothing he can do if the animal is, you know, what are the consequences going to be? So originally, he said five, you know, who's going to enforce that and what are you going to do about it?
They, they have a consultant, correct?
Correct.
That is aware of sort of zoning best practices around the state.
Right.
Probably outside of the state. Are they weighing in on these things and, and saying what the practical implications are of some of these things they want to do and hopefully get them to a point to at least rethink it?
Right, not yet. I mean, I, in speaking with Jason, as I understand it, they're having a roundtable discussion actually tomorrow night at the end of their meeting, and, and this is in the very early, early stages. And this is just him and I, him and I kind of, just kind of chatting about what direction, because I needed to know where he, where the committee stood to kind of put a date on this. Um, but I know that he'll look at, will remind him to get their opinion. But right now, we're letting maybe six or seven articles is where I was going, that they may possibly, six or seven different zoning articles.
Isn't that pretty typical for them?
Yeah, I mean, it's, so-
I don't know, I'm going to refresh my memory here. If the, the planning board puts, say, say, seven articles forward and those wherever public carens and all that, do we have to put them on the warrant?
The zoning ordinance indicates that the changes to the zoning amendment can happen in three ways, and one of them is the planning board, so I would say yes.
Let's say, because if it's something that's going to incur work on our part of it.
Well, and Jason's hoping to share that, that, you know what I mean? And it's not that he doesn't agree or support some of these, it's just, what are you going to do if, if Tom comes and says that David buried his dog? What do you want Jason to do? If the sentence ends there, how was he expected to deal with it?
Well, I think probably what would end up happening is if that's the case and there's no enforcement, when the public carens come and everything else, you point that out, and then we just recommend that it don't pass.
Right.
Because we know, you know, because it could be a hardship on everybody at that point.
Right, and again, it's not that he doesn't agree with it, it's just, he doesn't know what to do with that.
I assume the state has a regulation on this?
Uh, they do, but the interested parties want it more, more stringent.
I don't know, my, my view is if the state is taking a position on something, I don't know why we just don't defer to that position.
Right, and, and that's what we're doing.
Why do we ever do anything different than that?
Because we could overstep.
Yeah, if it states already got a rule on it, they, they've got more expertise to decide these things than we do.
Right, right, no, no, and, and this is, I mean, this particular situation, our health officer, animal control, everybody's been involved in this particular situation. But the, you know, the property owners are coming to the planning board meeting, they're looking for some answers, so we're trying to-
Yeah.
But if we add the ordinance and it passes, Jason's saying, what is he going to do about it?
How many times have we had this problem? Okay, it sounds pretty knee-jerk to me. Um, but, I mean, the planning board can do whatever they want.
Of course.
At the end of the day, they've got to convince us to make a recommendation on that. And, and the finance committee and everybody else, they better make sure that when they put this forward that it's plainly clear what consequences are, because we don't, we don't want to vote in something there that we don't know how we're going to enforce.
Do you have municipal management? So, alright, so anyway, so tentatively, I've put February 2nd on for zoning articles, and I'll continue to communicate with Jason after his workshop tomorrow.
I'll talk to Jason.
Um, to see if he feels like that's enough time, because we don't want to, you know, so. So assuming all that was done, and we had the zoning ordinances by February 2nd, um, I had a final recommendation from Warren and Finance's March 1st, and then yours for March 15th. And I just wanted to review the process and kind of compare it to the school, which we often hear, to make sure that the Warren and Finance and the Select Board are okay with what you're kind of thinking. You know, we sent an email out on Monday that, that said to the department head, do your budget, and when you're done, you're going to reach out to your selectman liaison, and that liaison is going to reach out to the Warren and Finance liaison, and the three of you are just going to get together, you know, for 15, 20 minutes and just go over the budget. You know, so you've got Tom and Joyce and the fire chief going over the budget. Get the three of you on the same page, get the questions answered, you know, pass back and forth whatever information you see fit. Once you guys come to some type of agreement that can support it, the idea is that in January, we start bringing these department heads with the two of you beside them to public meetings. And the Warren and Finance goes to all the school committee meetings, and that's how you deal with their budget. In the end, you just switch tables and you make a vote. So the idea is that we can get you into the January meetings, you know, the department head, the two of you, present the budget to the whole Warren and Finance and the selectmen, do it all at once. So that was a recommendation from Mark Roy, um, you know, a different way to approach it so that we're not bringing them all in here, bringing them all in there, and then having a Saturday, you know, let the liaisons work with them best they can, and then let them present.
Joyce, when's the next Warren and Finance meeting?
First, it'll be the second Monday in January.
First Monday is New Year's Day. I would, I would hope that you could meet beforehand and, and run, because this is a new process for them.
It is.
So I think you need to run this through, I'm sorry?
Sorry?
I, I think you need a meeting with them to, to bring them on, on board with this.
Definitely.
I mean, I think it's-
We'll ask please, so it's, he's on the way.
Yeah.
I have no problem with that.
We'll, we'll get something.
And, and I'll send an email kind of trying to, you know, wrap words around it and tie together the liaisons for each department so that you can see, you know, it's this person, this person for municipal management.
So by January or December 29th, would we be able to, let's say, January 1st, hand the Warren and Finance Committee the town budget?
Uh, assuming the treasurer has inputted it, yes.
Okay. It may take a little, if, if the department heads are, budgets are due, I would say you give her, you know, seven to 10 days.
I would say about the January 8th meeting, they would have it.
Pull that all together, then that budget is shared with the Select Board and the Warren and Finance Committee, and we have the meetings that you're talking about. And then during this process, we're going to be drafting warrants, too, correct? That's a separate process?
It, she, she should be doing it as she goes along.
As she goes along, and the treasurer does that?
Correct.
Okay, so we'd be working on a budget, and then as that's being developed, you'll get the warrants to accompany it sometime thereafter.
And the only other-
Do you think we should see, start seeing warrants?
January. In, in January.
In January.
Yes, I think we're going to have to, else it's not going to get done.
Right.
I mean, we can, so the other conversation for the board is, you know, hoping that we can, maybe, Tom, one of these Wednesdays that you're in, we can have a conversation with Mark Roy and look at any other consolidation. He was going to help make a recommendation. I mean, there is talk about putting all the roads on one article, you know, District 1, one article, short of, you know, the snow plowing. Put it in one article, put, you know what I mean, just consolidate a lot more, so that's a decision you guys need to make.
Leslie raised that the other night, and, and I was trying to recall exactly what Mark had suggested, but I think he felt that we had too many individual warrants. Did he also make comments about the individual capital reserves and whether or not we needed separate reserve accounts?
He thought each department should have some type of capital reserve.
Okay, so, so why don't we talk to Mark next Wednesday?
Okay.
We'll set up a time to go over all of that. We can talk about it at a, at maybe a select meeting that night. Fair enough?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Great, thank you for doing this.
Alright, so, I mean, assuming the Warren and Finance came to the meetings and it works the way that it did, they, they shouldn't have a lot of whole, a whole lot of outside meetings. I mean, you, you know, you're hearing the budget each week, you know, we'll bring a couple in at a time so that we're not dragging you out every Wednesday, and then it'd just be a matter of-
We've already said that with the, not knowing what the accelerated process was, that we would, wouldn't likely be, and we were in agreement, we would-
Joyce, why don't you come right up here?
Yeah, sure.
We want everybody out there to hear you.
Sure. No, we, we did say at the meeting that we would be available and all willing to meet twice a week if we had to.
Yeah, we're hoping you're going to come to these meetings, hear the budget, and in the end, just get together. And you shouldn't have to pull people back in, I mean, you know, get the questions answered as we go along.
And David, we know this is tentative until it's in stone, so don't worry about it.
Don't hold us to it.
So, yeah, yeah, no.
But we are very focused on this April 7th date.
Yeah.
And so that means we have to have the warrants acted upon by the, by the Select Board on March 15th, right Jennifer?
Yeah, we'd like to-
So we got, that's, and you guys have to have your work done by March 1st.
March 1st, yeah.
Yeah, okay, those are the key dates.
Yeah, and, you know, haven't watched the school department, which I know is, is a totally different kind of thing, but the way everything is done and it falls into place, I would say it's really possible. I, I really feel it's possible. If, if I can just, rather than coming back up, when you were talking about hypothetical changes to ordinances, uh, way back when I was on the planning board, we had this discussion about B and Bs. We talked to everybody, North Star, the consultant. We had the state fire marshal come in, because, you know, it's like you put things up on the walls, this is the numbers, this is this, this is that. And it gets to a point where it's almost, I don't know how it ended because I'm not there anymore, but that's like when you start putting in so many things, where do you bury the dead dog? And you can't enforce it. Is it worth the time and effort? Because as Jennifer says-
Don't create an ordinance you can't.
You can't enforce.
Yeah.
If there's no, you know, you bury your dead dog out on the corner of Sanborn.
On your property.
What's going to happen, you know? Or if it's on your own property?
I feel the state should be taking care of that.
I don't know how far they should go.
No, but I mean, I, I would think from, and I will say from Warren and Finance, if there's an authority that takes care of it, let them take care of it. Let the state do it.
You know, having said that, I understand these people's wells are contaminated or something, and who knows where, how it got contaminated?
Well-
That's the problem. I feel for them, that's a horrible situation, but it may not be associated with this, I, I don't know that this is-
We don't know a lot about it.
Direct cause and effect.
Cause and effect.
Very hard to tell.
Thank you.
So, so we're still looking at the April 7th?
Um, yeah, I don't think it's actually the 7th, we're looking at the 6th.
The 6th, I believe, that's Saturday.
It's a question mark, not a 7th. Looked too quickly at it.
Okay, well, I thought, I thought it said 7 too, that's why I said 7.
Correct that, it's April, not the day, we haven't put the date yet.
Alright. Alright, so we'll keep, uh, moving forward.
Okay. Okay, um, here we are, now to, okay, public comment. Got any public comment?
My buddy here. We were just, we, we were talking and we were wondering if the rec had their new shed.
They do.
Yeah.
Oh, they do, wonderful, they must be happy. Um, the other thing is, the, I know we have money for the parking lot, we've had it for quite a while.
I meant to give a little update on that tonight.
What, the rec?
Can I, can I give you an update? On the parking lot?
Okay.
So I talked, I did talk to the engineer.
Yeah.
This morning. Called me this morning, I, after you plow for a couple of days, you got to figure out what day it is. So I talked to him this morning, and he's going to be sending us a, like a contract. What I am, what I've authorized him to do is to send us a contract. I asked him to do a wetland delineation on the north side of the property and a survey so that we can make sure that when we, that I'm going to meet with him, and we're going to go up there. We need this wetland delineation done because we don't want to go up there and design it and not be in the right spot.
Right, right.
So, we, we, we're putting the cart before the horse, so he's going to send us a contract, give us a price on getting the wetland delineation done, and the property lines on that, which is going to kill two birds with one stone because we've got the state who wants to take a little bit of our property there. So, because we don't want to go up there and put a parking lot and then have a, into our parking lot.
Right.
So, so as far as I know right now, he's going to be, they're, they're going to be sending us that paperwork, and we're getting this ball rolling.
Right.
Because I want, you know, we, we've been talking about getting some stuff done, we're going to get the building down, let's get a parking lot up there. You know, we're, we're trying to get some of this money off the payroll, so you guys at the warrant finance, don't ask us why it's not so paid anymore.